Good evening and welcome to the December Lake Mills Area School Board Meeting. I'm Rick Mason, President, and our mission statement is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Could we stand up and do the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Could we have roll call, please?
John Delaney.
Here.
Rachel Davies.
Here.
Robert DiImperio.
Here.
Donna Thomas.
Here.
Richard Mason.
Here. Verification meeting notice.
The agenda was submitted to the Lake Mills leader, posted at the Lake Mills Library in the post office in Bank of Lake Mills on December 1st. It was also posted on the website. We needed to make some changes and updates, and those were added to the district website on December 7th.
Okay, thank you. Any agenda revisions? I don't think there are any, so can we have an approval, please?
I move approval of the agenda as printed.
Second.
Who would have seconded an approved agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side. All right, the agenda is approved. Committee input?
Our first speaker tonight will be Brad Klotz.
Mr. Klotz. And?
Oh, and Ms. Galstad.
Yeah, Brad Klotz, and I brought Deb Galstad, and we're here from the LMEA, and we'd like to reiterate our belief that the public has the right to know how much funding is taken from public schools to subsidize private education. Each public school district loses aid based on the number of voucher participants residing in this district, in their district, excuse me. Public schools are then forced to cut their budgets by the amount of deducted state aid or to exercise an increase in the levy to recoup that loss. So legislators have drafted legislation, Assembly Bill 267, which demands that property tax bills statewide report the amount of aid taken away from a homeowner's public school district. Statewide public school districts lose over $274 million per year, and Lake Mills has lost $57,232 to vouchers, which could go a long way towards paying another teacher's salary and reducing our class sizes. In addition, 84 percent of tuition voucher recipients had already been paying tuition at their private schools when the voucher program was expanded. Only public schools are required to accept and educate all students. As of today, we're aware of 11 Wisconsin school districts that have adopted resolutions in support of AB 267, and we appreciate the Lake Mills Board of Education's consideration of this issue and continue to encourage you to take action in support of the right-to-know legislation at this December board meeting, to publicize the issue locally, and to build relationships between school board members and local leaders to prevent ongoing increases in the amount of tax dollars being taken from public schools to subsidize private education. Thanks for your consideration again on this matter.
Thank you. Anything else?
Mr. Steve Wilkie is here this evening.
Okay, and he's gonna talk it this time?
Welcome to the school board.
Thank you. We received a state grant, and we had an easement that we understood was legitimate, and we started construction of a bike trail. We decided to relocate a portion of the bike trail, which is in this area right here because of a power pole guy. We sent an easement request back to the school district, and that's why I'm here. So, any questions?
So I can fill in a little bit of history that has led us to this discussion. So, we were approached in April of 2015 with the idea of having the spur off the bike trail onto the property that the district owns on the south side. It was discussed again in May of 2015, and at that time, a motion was passed that said to approve in concept an easement to be located on the east property line of the Lake Mills Area, school district property on the south highway, on South Highway 89, for the purpose of establishing a bike trail. Final layout, description, and terms shall be subject to final review and approval of the board. So the next action that we found was that the easement was signed in May of 2016, so...
There had to have been some additional, because conversation at the first meeting, right? Because the city requested, or the, I shouldn't say the city, but the group that was proposing this requested the easement along the west property line?
I'm gonna defer to Bob DiImperio because he worked on this project.
Initially, the request was to construct or to provide the easement for the construction of the bike trail along Highway 89 or our west boundary. During the discussion, meeting with the proponents of the bike trail, we decided that in the spirit of cooperation, children's safety, mom and apple pie, that without restricting our use of the property, we would be cooperative, but we would prefer it to be at the eastern boundary. And that was the decision that, or the motion that was made at that particular time. Because it was conceptual, we're just talking about the idea, yes, we would have approved an easement, we nor the proponents had any idea or didn't, there was no design, there was no dimensions, there was no nothing at the time, which was why we wanted it to come back to be able to see what it was. And this is fine, and the little jog to avoid the power poles and the guy wires, that's not an issue. But I think what the issue is, is the southern portion of our property where there is an easement and a bike trail that goes along our property and turns into the St. Paul's property at about, closing off about half of our southern border. We have no idea how we're gonna use that site. It is likely that access to that site will be coming from the proposed road, and we have no idea where our entrances are. We certainly, from the standpoint of safety, don't want to compromise the safety of the people using the bike path, and we don't want to restrict the use of our site. And so from the standpoint of this, I'm not sure why it just simply can't cross our property, and then what happens outside of our property is none of our business, and we'd be very happy, you know, to approve the eastern leg of that, but the southern boundary is really gonna be a problem for us, and I'm hoping that we can figure out a way to solve this. It's important that there's a bike trail, and I think it's important that, for whatever the future development of that site is, that we have the maximum flexibility. These are permanent easements. They will go with the property, even if we sell the property, that we have effectively given away district-owned land, and even though the easement was signed by our district administrator, I am not sure state statute allows district administrators to dispose of district land. So I'm, you know, I'm, we'll leave the law to the lawyers, but I would hope, Steve, that we could figure out a way to fix this.
So you're asking if we could look at adjusting and moving it to the south side of the, right away?
That would be, that would be our preference.
I will check. I don't have any problem with that. I think there are constructibility issues, but I will check and make sure, and then find out. I don't, I don't believe this restricts access to your property in any way in the future any more than a sidewalk would. So from that perspective, if you look at this, this is an easement, it's not actually a giving of property, it does give us some rights to use it in certain ways, but from a setback perspective, this land would be basically green space anyways, and you wouldn't have any access to it other than driveways across it, which, from a bike trail perspective, is pretty typical or a sidewalk. But I will definitely check into being able to relocate it to the south side. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Thank you, Mr. D. All right, please, you're up. Here.
It may be chilly outside, but at Lake Mills High School, things are heating up. New activities are sprouting up all over the school. This last Sunday was the induction for Tri-M Music Honor Society, which is a new organization our school is taking part of to recognize our school's musically talented and involved individuals. This Friday, the student council will be hosting the Holiday Ho-Ho-Ho Down after the boys' basketball game, so we're all excited to get into the holiday spirit. Boys and girls' basketball have started, they're both off to a great start. The boys are four and one, and the girls are two and two, and wrestling also just started, and they had their first meet where a couple of boys earned pins. Forensics just held its first informational meeting and had 55 students come, which is a sounding. This is compared to last year, which they had 35 students come, which is still a good number. Lastly, the musical held its recognition night two Sundays ago, and we found out that the musical was nominated for 22 Tommy Awards, including Best Musical, which is the first time in Lake Mills High School history that we have received that nomination. So as you can see, we're all very busy at the high school, and we're excited to continue to exceed expectations. It's a great day to be an Elcat.
Thanks, Blake. Okay, next one is, if you recall, we evaluate the superintendent once a year, and it's time to do her evaluation again. So I'm asking that the evaluation form, and I've got one on your desk, and we've sent you an electronic copy also, be turned in to me by December 22nd. We're a little bit behind, but not much, and then the second meeting in January, we will meet in closed session and go over the input that I received. And then I will meet with the superintendent before the next board meeting in February, the first board meeting in February, and give her the feedback. So, any questions on that, or the format, or anything?
We'd like to talk about the second meeting in January.
We need to have a second meeting in January. There's enrollment numbers we need to go over in a closed session, and buildings and ground supervisor perhaps will be able to appoint one at that time. So we need to establish a second board meeting in January, and it's been suggested that we do the 29th of January. How's that square with your calendars?
It works for me.
Yeah, you're okay with it?
What time are we looking at?
Well, we can set any time we want for that.
That date works.
I mean, we can start early, if you want.
29 is okay with me.
Is it okay with you? Donna?
It's okay with me.
Rachel, okay. What time would you like to begin?
Six o'clock, maybe?
Huh?
Six o'clock, maybe?
We can, six o'clock?
Sure.
Is that okay?
We normally have finance, so it'd be okay.
All right, let's do six o'clock on the 29th of January. Okay, thank you. All right, Mrs. Sevres.
Good evening. I have two things to talk with you tonight. The first thing I'd like to talk about is summer school. We surveyed, I sent out a survey to parents in November, November 13th, just to see the, I know that Melissa and the staff of the summer school this last year changed things up a little bit. And they did two sessions, and they did four classes each morning, and we wanted to see how parents responded, how they liked that, how kids liked that, and it was overwhelming. The response said they really liked having two sessions, and they really liked having four classes. It gave the kids a lot of opportunities for different activities, it kept them moving along, an hour for each class was very positive. So as we propose summer school dates for this next year, we'd like to consider keeping that structure in place. And I gave you an executive summary of the survey, just so you could kind of see how it played out. We had 171 parents respond, and they represented 200 and, boy, I lost my number, but I think it was like 233 students that participated in summer school out of the 930 that did participate. So we had about a 25 percent participation rate in a survey, and that's pretty good for a survey. We also had some parents completed who didn't take part in summer school, and we kind of asked, "Why not?" And a lot of them said, "We do other things in the summer," but there was some concerns about transportation. They really need transportation, or they need an all-day option. So the other thing that we are looking into at this point, and I recommend that we look into further, is offering through the REC program, kind of an extension, it's not, it wouldn't be summer school in the afternoon, but it would be a playground program in the afternoon where kids can stay with staff and do different activities based on, I ran one in Oak Creek, that we did arts and crafts. We did a lot of playground games, a lot of fun stuff, to keep kids entertained and active all summer long. So those are just some things that we are considering through that. Any questions about summer school? Awesome. So now I'm gonna move into report cards. Report cards became public a couple weeks ago, so anybody can click in on them and access them through the DPI website. So a little bit of history of the report cards. DPI started them in the year 2012, based on the 2011-12 school year. Every year they change a little bit. They took a hiatus in 2014-15, that was the year where the assessment changed, and they weren't exactly sure. There's a lot of question about things at that point. But lots of good information on these report cards. So a couple things to note as we look at the data. You have to remember that it's multiple years, multiple measures, meaning high school is all based on ACT data, but middle school and elementary school is based still on WKCE, Badger, and Forward, and I'll talk about that as we look at the data and where that is. Student growth is now based on the VARC model, the value-added model, and that's where they try to look at how much would a student with the same demographics be expected to grow from one year to the next? So you have to have two years of data, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as we get into that section. So through the accountability system, there are five categories. You can get into significantly exceeds expectations, exceeds expectations, meets expectations, meet few expectations, and fails to meet expectations. Most of the districts in the state fall into exceeds expectations or meets expectations. So we're gonna look a little bit about, I really want to just move this. So our district overall score is a 73.9 at exceeds expectations, and they weight things differently based on the demographic data of the school and of the district. So each of us has our own demographic information. So our enrollment, 1,518, students with disabilities, 12.3. The big number that you want to look at here is the economically disadvantaged, because that's where they weight things. And you can see, each of our schools are a little bit different. The elementary was at 28.4 percent economically disadvantaged, and that's based on free and reduced lunch applications. And then the high school, it's a little bit lower, 22.1. How does that affect things? Well, we're gonna see. They use a sliding scale to set that, and this link, since you guys have access to my PowerPoint, if you can look on that link, you can actually play with that sliding scale on DPI's website. So you set your sliding scale, and I'm just gonna step over here for a second. This is the sliding scale for the district. So you go on there, and you say, "We are measured in these four priorities. We get student achievement, we get growth, we get closing the gaps, and we get on-track post-secondary readiness." Those four things. And then you set how much is your economically disadvantaged, and from there you get to see how it weights your scores. So the district, this really looks like you can't really read it, but student achievement for the district is weighted at a 31.5 percent, where growth is weighted at an 18.5. So that, and if you were a more economically disadvantaged district, it would be the opposite. So growth would count more than achievement. Does that make sense? So that's kind of new, and each of our schools had a different percentage for each of those things based on that. Except for the high school, they don't have growth, because they don't have a measure one year to the next. They're just looking this year at 11th grade ACT data. And they look at last year's 11th grade ACT data, but that's not the same kids, so they're not looking for growth. Makes sense? Okay, so what does this mean? In student achievement, you can see I put our scores in black and put the state's scores in red, so that you could see how we compare to the state in each of those areas. And I talked a lot about our data last time, maybe two months ago. We're looking at that again, our district, English Language Arts, 34.5, compared to the state, 34.3. I'm glad that we're above the state, I wish we were higher, a lot higher in that area, and that's something we're working on. Mathematics, 35.6, compared to the state at a 32.4. That has been steadily moving up, which is a good thing. And then you can track and go out there for each of the different schools in each of the different areas, but it's looking like our math scores are, we're exceeding the state average in every area, and our English Language Arts, we'd like to get a little higher so that we are always above the state. Our student growth, like I said, they, what they do is, for student, oh, I should go back a second. Student achievement scores, what they do is if you get, if you score advanced, you get 1.5 points for each kid that scores advanced. If you get proficient, you get one point for each student that does that. If you, basic, it's .5 points, and minimal, or they've changed the wording for that, is zero points. What they do is they average it out, you have three years' worth of data, they average it out, they weight it, so that the most recent year gets the most weight, they take your score there, and they times it by 1.5. Last year's, the year before was 1.25, and the year before that was 1.0. So they're weighting it out, so the most current year comes out with, giving you towards the most points for your score. And from there, that's how they calculate your score. With growth, like I said, it's based on the value-added model, which they kind of explain as if you had two trees that came in with the exact same demographic areas, if they're both maple trees, and they both have had the same amount of water and everything else, and you gave them to two different farmers, what would you expect? You'd expect the same growth out of each of them, it doesn't matter, but that doesn't happen because the farmers treat them differently, and one grows more than the other. How much value did the farmer add to the tree, to each tree? That's the kind of thing that they're looking for, I know it's the craziest little analogy that they came up with, but that's what they're trying to do, is they're trying to take all the variables out and compare my kid to someone who's similar demographic to my kid, not try to compare my kid to someone who grew up in Milwaukee. They're trying to make similar demographic comparisons for growth, which is interesting. Closing the gaps, I put in some slides in here to show what the gaps, because I need it visually, and I figure if I need it visually, other people probably need it visually, too. But here they are looking at specific areas of students that they have identified as gap, the traditional gap students. So students of different ethnicities, students of different races, students of, students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged students, they are comparing. So those are all things that we're looking at. You need to have at least 20 kids in a cohort in order for them to count the data, so they can't, you can't figure out whose test data it is. So what they do is they give you, they look to see first how many cohorts you have that meet that 20 students of data. You have to have that number 20 for at least three years in order to have a trend line going, and the way they figure that trend line is the same exact way that they figure student achievement. 1.5 points for advanced, one point for proficient, .5 for basic, and zero for minimal. And then they divide it by the number of kids, from there you get that little tiny number of like .5, or .31, or whatever. And then what they do is they graph it out, and they find the trend line, which is that little black line, and they calculate what the slope is of that line. They compare it to students from the state that are not in that demographic. So when we're looking at closing the gaps, our district Hispanic compared to white. The Hispanic are the Hispanic kids in our school district. The white students that they're compared to are the white students across the state, not the white students in our district. So that's kind of an interesting thing to make note of. And so what is the trend? Well, you can see, the first two years was still the WKCE data. That third year, where there's that little spike in ELA, was the Badger exam. And then these last two years, where it's kind of leveled off, our ELA went down this last year, is the Forward exam. So how much of the data and the slope is contributed by actual data, and how much is because of a comparison of exams? It's really interesting to put that kind of information on there. What we're looking at is we want our slope going higher than the state's slope in order to get more points, in order to say that we're closing the gap. So when we look at ELA for Hispanic, our gap is getting wider. You can kind of see those two black lines. This one's going up, this one's going down, this blue one is us, the red one is the state, and the state's always gonna be higher, that's why it's a gap. And so the line is getting wider here than it was here, so the gap is increasing. Not by a lot, but enough to say that this is something to pay attention to. With math, on the other hand, the gap is closing, and you can really kind of see that with the red line going like this, and the blue line kind of coming up. When we look at students with disabilities compared to students without disabilities, again, it's our students with disabilities compared to students without disabilities across the state. So our ELA gap is getting bigger, and our math gap is getting bigger, which is not something we want to see. Economically disadvantaged, again, economically disadvantaged, we're the blue line, the red line is not economically disadvantaged across the state. We are seeing a slight gap increase in both ELA and math there. And then our limited English proficiency area, we're actually really happy about this data, because it's showing that the gap is starting to close, which is something that we really, really, really want to see. And we're really paying attention to the last two years, because that's when Ms. Williams joined our staff as an ELL staff member, and looking at that data, even if you just look at the last two years, you look at that ELA, and the blue line's getting closer to the red. When you look at the math, that's a huge difference there. So that's something that I told Tara she needs to be proud of, because she's working really hard to get that to happen. So at the elementary, one of the areas you're gonna see now, there's only three years' worth of data, because the cohort has only been big enough for three years. So one of the changes they made in the report cards this year is they used to make the trend line for us only three points, and compared to the state, a five points. What they found out is that's not valid comparison, and so that's one of the changes they made on the report card this year, is they're only gonna compare three years of three years. Part of the reason it wasn't valid is now you were sticking the WKCE data in there for the state, but not for us, and that just doesn't work. So what we're looking at is trying to close those gaps again, and in both these cases, we have a positive number, and you can really see the gap is closing. Red and blue are coming together. Our economic disadvantage at the elementary school, it's kind of an ebb and flow there. It is just a little bit wider this year than before, but it's very interesting to watch these trend lines, especially in math, because it looks like everybody's going down. And then if they don't have 20 kids in a cohort, they will sometimes combine them. So this one is students with disabilities and limited English proficiency, that's what the LEP stands for. And this is another one, again, we're watching that LEP, that limited English proficiency, that ELL group, and watching students with disabilities. I'm gonna tell you, when I looked at the data and I could pick out which specific kids were in here, it's our limited English proficiency kids that are really achieving, achieved really well last year at the elementary school, and they brought that close to that gap, which is nice. It's not closed completely, but it is definitely going in the right direction. At the middle school, we are, we have a big enough cohort for Hispanic again, and we're watching that gap in ELA get bigger. In math, it actually got smaller, but it's really hard to see that with that data. Students with disabilities at the middle school, the gap is getting bigger, and the same thing with economically disadvantaged. At the high school, all we have the data for is the A At the high school, all we have the data for is the ACT. And that is actually, we've taken the ACT for the last three years as a statewide. I'm not exactly positive what the 2012-13 and 13-14 data is, but I think it's ACT. It just wasn't required of every student, but I think they're just using who did take it, which is another hard comparison, because not everybody took it. Again, ELA, the gap's getting a little bit bigger. Math, the gap got bigger, and then it's starting to shrink back up again, but it's still in the negative. And then we look at on-track and post-secondary readiness. And this was an area that I appealed on our behalf to the state. And it was very interesting, because our graduation rate is really, really high, and our attendance rate is really, really high. This isn't exactly where I appealed. Sorry, I'll go on to the next one. It's a closing gaps area that I didn't put into slide form. But our graduation rate, they're comparing this exact same group, how many graduate and how many don't. We had 100% of our kids graduate, and that meant there was no gap. And on our score, they don't give us all of our points. Because what they do is they're still looking for those trend lines. And what was interesting to me is we should have, I said, we've closed the gap. We've closed the gap for the last three years. There is no gap. In fact, we're above the state. We're, it's 100%. There is no gap. And they said, well, our formula for doing this is we take, we give you an alternative measure that is based on the best score that the best district got in the state that is closing. And I said, but we closed the gap. And they said, you're right. We will discuss it and look at it for next year. We'll see if they do or not. But that was kind of their answer. So that's, that kind of speaks to absenteeism. That is something that they're looking at, students who are chronically absent. And how many students do we have that are chronically absent? We met that goal, so we didn't have any deductions. These are two deduction-based systems. And then the dropout rate, they want it to be less than 6%, and they're looking at grades seven through 12. So what do we need to do? We are definitely having lots of data talks. I'm having at least one meeting a week that is, I'm talking about data, and making sure our staff know what they're being measured on and what we can do to help our students. One of our real struggles is how much test prep do you do versus how much real learning and deep learning do you do? And that's a fine balance. We need to make sure that our kids know how to take these standardized tests, but at the same time, life is not a standardized test. Life is about being able to learn and adjust and adapt to situations, and that's what we want our students to do. We want them to be college and career-ready. We want them to be lifelong learners, and that's what we're focusing on in our instruction. We are looking closely at our data in English Language Arts, and we are continuing department meetings in those areas. And we're also comparing the state data. One of the things that's nice about this going public is I can now look at all of the districts in the state and see which ones are like us demographic-wise, and I'm having conversations with them about what they're doing, and making sure that we're using best practices with our kids, making sure that we're using best practices with our ELL students, and making sure one of the areas that we're really watching closely is our gifted and talented kids, because sometimes they're the ones who don't make the growth, because we're focusing so hard on students who aren't achieving. So we want to make sure that that's there. So lots of conversations happening around this data. Any questions?
Good, thanks. A lot of data to go over.
Lots of fun.
Mr. Vogel, you're up.
I think we're going to start with Mr. Murphy.
Yeah, I was just going to introduce him.
Oh, okay.
All right, I'd like to introduce Steve Murphy, our athletic director, to give a summary of fall and what's going on in winter, maybe?
All right. Hi there. I have prepared a handout for you that Mrs. Strike handed out to everyone with the Fall Athletics. As you can see, you know, we had a great fall athletically across the board. I just wrote a little summary of each particular individual sport and what they achieved as a team, and some individual accolades as well. I won't read them all to you, but the volleyball program, I believe, is a school-record 25-win season. They lost in the regional championship game to Lakeside Lutheran, the eventual state champion, and were second in the conference. Football went to the third level playoffs for the second consecutive year, which is the equivalent of winning a regional and going to the sectional. And they were 10-2 in the season, both those losses to Lodi, the eventual state champion in our division. Girls cross-country, they were kind of our big hitters this fall, kind of came out of nowhere. Conference champs, sectional champs, and then they go to state and get third. It was my first experience going to the state cross-country meet, and I have to say, that is a magnificent event. And our girls ran tremendously well and represented very well. It all started when they went to Palmyra Eagle in the fall and won their first invitational. Coach Zeski sent me a text that, hey, we won the girls, you know? And they just went on from there. And they're predominantly a freshman team with one senior, so the future's pretty bright for them as well. The boys soccer team, the same day our girls cross-country team won the sectional, our boys went that afternoon to Wisconsin Heights and won the regional championship versus Wisconsin Heights. So I got to watch those two events back-to-back. And then that night, I got to watch our girls volleyball team in the regional championship game versus Lakeside. So that's a pretty good day for an athletic director and our school district. So, you know, the boys soccer team, the regional champs, great season, 14-6 and 2 overall. And they lost to the eventual state champion, the Prairie School, as well. So when we get beat out in the tournament, we're not losing to a slouch. So our kids are competing at a high level. I'm very proud of that. Boys cross-country was kind of a rebuilding year for them, but they were proud to say that at the sectional meet, after finishing last or second to last all year, they finished in 10th place at the sectional meet, was a nice finish for them, and I was very happy for them. And then our girls tennis team, we had a couple all-conference girls. We had one undefeated team in conference play. And then our number-one doubles team was second in the conference, as far as second-team all-conference. So again, following up a great year last year, we had a tremendous start to the school year this year. And then it should be noted again, I say this every year, but a lot of those same student athletes are in the Fall Musical, too. So they're putting in a lot of hours. So it's a pretty unique situation we have here, where our kids are very well-rounded, and they achieve very highly. I also, on the last page, have your participation numbers. And you can see the last year's numbers compared to this year's numbers, and then the difference. We are down in a couple. The football numbers are down from last year a little bit due to we do have an exceptionally small senior class. But I would say it's quality there, not quantity. We had seven or eight kids, and they're very good ones. And then the other one was boys basketball. I think we're down one. So in the boys and girls basketball seasons, like Blaze said, are underway, and wrestling is also underway, and things are going well for everyone. Any questions for me?
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Good report. Mr. Vogel, you're back up?
Yes.
Okay.
We do have our course handbook for next year for the 18-19 school year. I just want to note a couple of changes to that. On page five, there are several new Aeg courses that Mr. Wienerfeld put together and is very excited about. That is Large Animals and Meat Science, Vet Science, Companion Animal Science, and Ag Business and Farm Management. Also, again, on page five and six, if you look at the Business and Information Technology Department, added three dual-credit classes with MATC, Advanced Computer Applications, Web Design, and Graphic Design, to go along with our accounting course. So that's four dual credits in that department, which is, we'll look to add more, we'll look to get more dual-credit options in Aeg as well. Two other changes, page seven, we added AP Chemistry, that's online. And then also on page eight, we added another virtual class, German II, for our, a number of our German I students, who took German I last year, or this year, the ability to take German II next year. Just a kind of a report card follow-up, you know, we really work hard here on our student engagement factors. When you look at attendance, dropout, graduation rate, and that really is a lot of our work with alternative educational settings for our students, with, we really look at two options, HSED in Fort Atkinson, and our Crossroads Program in Johnson Creek, which has been extremely, extremely successful for a number of our kids that kind of don't fit in the kind of traditional, you know, four walls in the classroom educational setting. We're also starting several weeks ago, working on new tardy measures or procedures, kind of taking the kids who have a certain number of tardies, that's coming out of the office. So that's done automatically, rather than kind of relying on the teacher, another thing for the teacher to worry about. So that's, I think, going well. And again, one of our goals this year is to reduce kids being late to school and late to classes. As far as the student achievement, as far as the report card, a lot of our core departments have been working with Ms. Eerude on actually looking at the data, utilizing Wise Dash, and focusing on several small but ACT prep strategies in kind of a month, six weeks, leading up to the test at the end of February. A couple more things before I go. Want to announce, and I set something out on Facebook, and my Twitter account, Lake Mills High School, was named to the eighth annual AP Honor Roll. This is our third year. Again, it's, we're one of 447 districts in the North America, and only 25, we're one of 25 in the state of Wisconsin. Again, we get, and this is our third year, and it's that we basically increase participation in students taking AP courses, and then at the same time, either maintaining or increasing students who get a three or above on the exam. So pretty cool stuff. Before I go, just a reminder that band orchestra holiday concert Thursday, which is unbelievable, and also choir concert next Tuesday in the auditorium, 7:00 p.m. Awesome as well. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Bauer?
Well, she's coming up, I'll just add that when I got the call from AP about being on Honor Roll, they said it's very rare for schools to have back-to-back AP Honor Roll awards in the country, so, or in North America.
Back to back.
To back, right. He said, this is unbelievable that I'm calling you three times in three years in a row. So congratulations to everybody.
Good.
I'm going to focus my report tonight a little bit more on what we're doing regarding the scores that you saw in the Forward exam. Our staff has really looked a lot at a bunch of different things in our middle school. And I want you to know that the goals that we based our, for this year, based our stuff on for this year was because of some of the scores that we've seen and some of the gaps that we've seen. So especially around our LEP and low economic status students, we're really looking at the gaps and what's causing these gaps. And so we've begun a discussion on equity. And so this year, what we looked at is they have an equity taxonomy, like what are the building blocks for creating equitable practices, so that your LEP students and your low socioeconomic status students are receiving equal access to the curriculum and those types of things. So when we looked at those things, I didn't bring it with me, but the taxonomy is divided into five things. And we discussed as a staff that, wow, we do pretty good at the top first three, the top three, engaged and inspired learners, instructional excellence, and opportunity to learn. We feel like we have equitable practices in those three. So we are currently focused on the bottom two tiers, social-emotional engagement, which we are doing through fostering community, and physical integration, which includes exploration and understanding of race, class, and gender issues. Last year, we did work around poverty and implicit bias. And this year, we're continuing this work through staff introduction to basic restorative practices and professional development around race and gender issues. So when you look at what moves the needle for students in poverty, that sense of community, that sense of, you know, having the things you need, like the school store that we have going, are all important in increasing our achievement. So school-wide, that's what we're looking at. Math, we're doing fine. Of course, we always want to do better, but we're closing some gaps, and we're also beating the state in terms of achievement. So really, what, when our math team explored where they were still missing pieces, it was around the project-based learning. And so we've adopted the CPM curriculum, or CPM materials, and are working on providing more project-based learning for the students to continue to close that gap and to continue our path of achievement. ELA is a little different story. So we were already meeting last year to talk about some gaps, and as just an ELA team. And this year, they wanted to schedule regular ELA meetings just to create some collaboration and community around the ELA team. So we scheduled those. Then I was at a principal meeting, and a principal said, he was from Fort Atkinson, and he said, you know, wow, we really raised our score. So I went back to the ELA team, and I said, listen, can I go to Fort Atkinson? Do you guys mind if I go to Fort Atkinson, take a peek at what they're doing? And I'm not trying to offend anybody or do anything, but they've really done a nice job. So do you mind if I go and see what they're doing? And they had a different, they had different materials and different curriculum, but really, what really struck me is they had a physical data wall. We have EduClima, which can give you individual scores on the computer, and you can create different forms and stuff. But to actually see it on the wall, or to actually place students on a wall with their data, was really impactful. And when I took, what I took away from that whole meeting, we met for several hours, was we need to create a data wall, and we need to start having conversations. So what we did is we created a data wall. We go in that room, we sit, we look at the data, we think about it in different ways, and then we have discussions as a team about what we're noticing and what kind of strategies we need to use to improve those scores. So so far, so now we've scheduled bi-weekly data meetings for the ELA team. And so we reviewed the Forward exam results, established what data, excuse me, established what data we wanted to consider, created the data wall, looked for patterns, had the team discussions, and discussed practices. And now we are looking at getting our ninth-grade data out, because the Forward exam is taken in the spring. So our data, our eighth-grade data goes right to the high school before we even hardly get a chance to look at it. So we're going to add ninth-grade data up on our data wall, and then we're also going to start looking at growth. Want to mention a couple of other things. Our PBIS team and our advisories, you know, working on that community outreach piece, made blankets for a variety of community entities in the district. So one example is that EMTs, when they go out, or first responders, when they go out, oftentimes while they're waiting for the police or the fire department to show up, they have people sitting in the cold with nothing to wrap them in. So we created blankets so that they can have those in the car, so when somebody has an accident or something, they're waiting for the authorities to show up, they can have something warm. So I want to thank the PBIS team for working on that. And then I have to say, very impressive concert last week. I said to Mr. Klotz on the way out, I said, I don't know why you do that with sixth graders, but that's some crazy music you play, why you work so hard on that? But I thought it was great. Diverse group, and I think when you sit in that concert in the gym, and you see it fill up once, and then you see it all empty, and all fill up again, you just realize how important music and the arts are to this district, and what an excellent program we have. All right, any questions for me? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson?
Good evening. I also wanted to follow up on the school report card information. We're very proud of our exceeding expectation ranking for the state report card, and we're very close to significantly exceeding expectations. So our teachers have been working tirelessly over the years, looking at student data and information. We continue that work. Just this month, all of our teachers met with our literacy coach in professional development sessions, looking at student writing samples, gathering data on their spelling patterns, their word work, and then looking at trajectories of instruction. So isolating word work on one lens, and then building that into their reading work that they're doing during reading workshop, and then into writing during writing workshops. So Mrs. Nichols and the team have been working hard, looking at individual students, and then how to plan instruction for all of the students within our classrooms. In addition to that, we also are building a community of readers within our school. So this month, we've started up book clubs with two police officers and Mrs. Strike. So we have three different book clubs happening within the school, with groups of third graders and groups of fourth graders. The students all read the same title, the same book together, and then come to a lunch bunch with the leader of that group to talk about the books. And the reason we're doing this is to help students see that adults are readers, that reading is something that... reading is something that will get you places in this world, and to have an outsider come in to our school to show them that reading is very, very powerful. I am also leading some of the book clubs. I meet with every fourth grader across the school year, so those book clubs will start in January. They read the book, come to lunch with me, and we talk about the characters that they meet and the lessons that they learn through those books. We also have a book fairy at our school. So once a month, approximately, all of the classrooms get a new book from the book fairy. The book is selected to highlight the theme of the year, and this year, it's shining, let kindness shine. So the books are looking at diverse topics, but also helping students to see the world outside of Lake Mills and how we can help others, but then also seeing the importance of reading, that the book fairy comes and delivers these great titles to their classrooms. And then, in addition to that, not only is it about student achievement in the form of academics, but also the whole child. So this past month, Mrs. Dahl, Mrs. Mowen, and Mrs. Stilling led a school-wide endeavor of creating blankets, the Cuddles Project, that they presented at our assembly on Friday. There is a beautiful video that Mrs. Dahl put together to showcase all of the cooperation that the whole school did, from the staff to the students, making and then giving away these blankets. So the video is located on our website, you can take a look at that. And then our mindful practices have been underway all school year. Not only do we have the mindful mornings, but we also have small group sessions with our school counselor, and with our, I'm sorry, our school social worker, and our school psychologist, working with small groups of students. And then, starting after winter break, I'm also going to be establishing a quiet room before school. Some students need a quiet start to the day, so instead of going out to the playground, I'll invite students in to have some mindful practices before the day starts. And on a very different topic, our winter concert is tomorrow. Mr. Shanafelt and our third and fourth graders will be starting at 6:00 in our gym for our winter performance. Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Brown? Come on down.
Hello. At first, I just wanted to thank you for allowing me to attend the transition information night at Mason College last month. And then, in regards to the data, we'll be meeting at each building to kind of disaggregate the data around reading and math for our students with disabilities. So we'll look a little bit closer at elementary, middle school, and the high school level. We do have a continuum of programming for our students with disabilities, and they are being delivered with fidelity, and the new staff that we've hired this year have been trained in the programs and the interventions that we're using in order to meet that fidelity piece. And then also to help strengthen our students with disabilities, this is the third year of having our autism grant. So we've been able to bring in area consultant to help provide training for our staff, and then we're also to be able to provide professional development opportunities as well. And just next week, we'll be finishing up our self-assessment for our IEPs and students with disabilities, and next month, I'll be able to share the findings of that. Any questions? Thanks.
Good, thank you. Mrs. Brockert?
Tonight, I just want to highlight a few things that are going on in our technology department. The first is, we're looking at updating our technology plan, and the tool we're using for that is called Future Ready Framework. And I did put a link on my report area to the part on the DPI website to help explain that a little bit more. But just to tell you, the purpose of the Future Ready Framework is to help our leaders, including administrators, teachers, librarians, and technology integrators, understand the major components of using technologies to transform learning through collaborative dialogue, planning, and budgeting process, identify opportunity gaps in our district related to continuous improvement and strategic planning goals, discuss integrated funding plans across federal, state, local, and other fund sources to fulfill our vision for student learning, and to develop specific action plans to address them. So we started the first phase of doing the assessment tool with that program, and we'll be meeting back as a group in January to look at some of that data. The technology committee consists of principals, teachers, including library media specialists, our technology director, and tech support. So I appreciate all of their efforts in working on this plan. And then another highlight is that Chris Zerniak, our district technology director, he will be presenting at the January convention. He's one of a committee that's presenting on how good is your district's cybersecurity. So for those of us who are able to attend the conference, he's doing that on Thursday, if you're there on Thursday. And the last part of technology I want to update is that Chris and I are working on submitting our E-Rate proposals, and this is a federal program where we get money to help support infrastructure for our district as well as our internet services. So in the past, we've received some funding on replacing switches for infrastructure. This year, we're going to submit proposals for replacing UPSs, the uninterruptible power supply. And we're also looking at a proposal for a wide-area network to put fiber in place. Right now, we have, what are they called?
The what?
The towers.
The towers, thank you. The towers to connect our wide-area network. So we're looking at trying to do a fiber run to connect our buildings. So, and again, if we can get some bids for that, we will get some money to help subsidize the cost, so that's why we're looking at doing that. So that's all I have.
Questions? Everybody? All right, Mrs. Strike?
First of all, I wanted to talk for a moment about the WSB School Perceptions Survey for school board members. We offered that last year, but just three of the five completed it, so we wondered if you had interest in doing that self-assessment of the board this year. We would like to go with that. Remember, that's the thing where we give you a code, and you go in and fill it out online?
Did we recently receive something like that?
It's at your place tonight, the code words. I think what we would like to do is have a commitment of all five to do it, to make it meaningful. We weren't able to really work with last year's data because we didn't have full participation.
Because why?
Just three of the five completed this survey.
Oh, you can't get the data unless everybody did?
Well, we have the data. We do have the data.
It makes more valid if all.
Yeah, I agree with that. I know.
Okay, I'm in.
I did a quick form.
All right, okay, well, great, thank you. As you know, I have been meeting with all employees in the district, along with Ms. Brockert, to go over the handbook. It's a massive document, it's a massive undertaking. And through these discussions, we found some more editorial changes that we need to do. So I just have some of these listed here. They're nothing of substance, they are only editorial changes that we're going to be making. For example, just the title of the Building and Grounds Director, and we also noticed that we left off the Assisted Building and Grounds Director on the organizational chart. There's a few words missing. Earlier, we had talked about fixing the retirement language for paraeducators, and we changed it in the chart, but not the narrative. So we just need to make the chart and the narrative align. So that's another editorial correction that we're going to be doing there. It's time to talk about school board elections, and just a reminder for the two candidates, or the two board members here, to let our office know by December 22nd if you will not be running, and then if you are going to be running, that paperwork is due on January 2nd. In the Recreation Department, we are finishing up second interviews for the supervisor, the recreation supervisor, so that process has been going on. We did have 23 applications, and they really varied in experience. And we sent out a reminder, actually, with the job posting again, with the job description, because we felt that some people maybe thought it was a director job and not a supervisor job, so we clarified that, and some people did pull out their applications then. I think there was some misunderstanding around that. So we'll be interviewing five candidates this week. And then, one other thing, just today, I attended the Every Child Thrives Conference. It is a project between Jefferson and Dodge County to support all students, particularly early learners, or early childhood students, to prepare them for school and success. And actually, today, we even heard from the Federal Reserve and some of the other things of the economic impact of early education. And I did put some information at your site, because I signed a pledge for the Lake Mills School District to support this movement, and joining over 100 different schools and businesses in Jefferson and Dodge County area have already pledged their support to work on this project, and so I pledged our support today as well.
Okay, any questions? All right, let's go onto the action items. Approval of November 13th Regular Board of Education Meeting Minutes. I think we can take the first three together. Approval of November 13th Finance Committee Proceedings, and Approval of November 20th Boardwork Session Proceedings.
I have to abstain on one and two, but I can vote on three because I was absent.
At the Finance Committee.
At the Finance Meeting?
Yeah, the first two I have to abstain on, but the last one, I was here.
You should take them, sir.
Okay, then what do you say?
Okay, well, I move the board approve the minutes of the November 13th, 2017 Regular Board of Education Meeting.
All right, stop there. Let's take them separately, because we're going to have an abstention. Okay, a second on that. All right, any discussion on that, on the meeting minutes, November 13th? Okay, let's do roll call.
Don Delaney?
Hi.
Rachel Davies?
Hi.
Robert DiPiero?
Hi.
Donna Thomas?
Abstain.
Richard Mason?
Hi, and that passes four to one.
And I'll move the board approve the proceedings of the November 13th, 2017 Finance Committee Meeting.
Second.
Questions, comments on that one? All right, roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Hi.
Robert DiPiero?
Hi.
Donna Thomas?
Abstain.
Don Delaney?
Hi.
Richard Mason?
Hi, and that passes four to one. Okay, approval of November 20th Work Session.
I move the board approve the proceedings of the November 20th, 2017 Boardwork Session.
Second.
Moved and seconded and approved the Boardwork Session on the 20th of November. Any questions on that? Okay, roll call on that, please.
Robert DiPiero?
Hi.
Donna Thomas?
Hi.
Don Delaney?
Hi.
Rachel Davies?
Hi.
Richard Mason?
Hi, and that passes unanimously. Approval of vouchers and invoices.
I move the board approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $1,449,333.01 for the month of November 2017. Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the vouchers and invoices. Questions, comments on those? All right, roll call, please.
Donna Thomas?
Hi.
Don Delaney?
Hi.
Rachel Davies?
Hi.
Robert DiPiero?
Hi.
Richard Mason?
Hi, and that passes unanimously. The Treasurer's Report.
I move the board approve the Treasurer's Report for the month of November 2017.
Second.
Moved and seconded and approve the Treasurer's Report for November. Questions on that? Comments? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Hi.
Rachel Davies?
Hi.
Robert DiPiero?
Hi.
Donna Thomas?
Hi.
Richard Mason?
Hi, and that passes unanimously. All right, so we got the approval of the bike trail construction plans in the district. It looks like, at this point, we'll table it.
I move to table it.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
Do you care if I make a motion? I wrote it out.
Oh, yes.
I move to table the motion until such time as the board's motion of 5:11:15 can be addressed in relationship to the new bike trail request. And furthermore, it is moved that all discussion regarding the bike trail concept be referred to the Facilities Committee.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to table it, and then take it up at the Facilities Committee. Questions, comments on that? All right, go ahead.
Other than just to, you know, confirm that what Bob had said earlier when Mr. Wilkie was here, that we were supposed to see what was going on, and so all of that happened, and it needed board approval, and none of that happened.
That's correct.
So.
That's correct.
We've never seen those plans.
No, that's correct.
And Mr. Wilkie thought we had.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions, comments on that? All right, we're going to table it and then take it up with the Facilities Committee and bring it back to you guys. Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Hi.
Robert DiPiero?
Hi.
Donna Thomas?
Hi.
Don Delaney?
Hi.
Richard Mason?
Hi, that passes unanimously. Approval of 2018 summer school dates.
I move, I move, the board approve the 2018 summer school dates as proposed. Session one, dates of June 18th through July 3rd. Session two, dates of July 9th through July 24th. And swimming lesson dates of July 9th through July 24th.
Second.
Moved and seconded and approved the new summer school dates, or summer school dates for the summer. Questions, comments on those? All right, roll call, please.
Robert DiPiero?
Hi.
Donna Thomas?
Hi.
Don Delaney?
Hi.
Rachel Davies?
Hi.
Richard Mason?
Hi, and that passes unanimously. Approval of early graduation requests for the 1718 school year.
This is a late request, but I hope you had a chance to read the letter. The student change programs, and went into the HSED program after the deadline to apply for early graduation, and just really flourished and did a wonderful job, and I think that that's probably one of the best-written letters that we've ever received. So I hope that you took a chance, that you had a chance to read that.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve the early graduation request as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the early graduation request. Any comments?
I would second Ms. Strike's comment about the letter. That was the best that I have seen.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Donna Thomas?
Hi.
Don Delaney?
Hi.
Rachel Davies?
Hi.
Robert DiPiero?
Hi.
Richard Mason?
Hi, that passes unanimously also. Approval of 2018 Lake Mills School Forensic Accounting Trip.
This is a trip where some of our business students travel to, I believe it's Lakeland College, and compete to find errors in the books. And our team has done very, very well at this in the past, and I would recommend you approving this trip.
I move the board approve the March 11th through the 12th, 2018 LMHS Business Department Overnight Trip to the Forensic Accounting Competition at Lakeland College. It is understood that the board will incur no cost and will accept no liability for any funds lost for any reason. Second.
Moved and seconded and approve the Business Overnight Accounting Trip. Comments? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Hi.
Rachel Davies?
Hi.
Robert DiPiero?
Hi.
Donna Thomas?
Hi.
Richard Mason?
Hi, and that passes unanimously. Approval of the 2018 Varsity Baseball Trip.
This is another overnight trip when our baseball team goes to Wisconsin Dells for a tournament, and it really is just most efficient if they stay over, and it's a kind of kickoff to the baseball season.
I'll move the board approve the April 6th to 7th, 2018 Varsity Baseball Overnight Trip to Wisconsin Dells. It's understood the board will incur no cost and accept no liability for any funds lost for any reason.
Second.
Moved and seconded and approve the baseball trip. Did you get a second on that, Megan? Ty? Ty goes to the runner. All right, any questions, comments on that? Okay, roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Hi.
Robert DiPiero?
Hi.
Donna Thomas?
Hi.
Don Delaney?
Hi.
Richard Mason?
Hi, and that passes unanimously. Approval of co-curricular resignation.
Our very foresightful Ms. Anzrude has asked to resign as senior class advisor at the end of this year, so for next year, because she's taking on a national, or a state office in world language.
Great, great.
Move the board approve the co-curricular resignation for Ms. Ellen Anzrude as senior class advisor at the end of the 2017-18 school year, and thank her very much for the dedication to the students of Lake Mills.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the co-curricular resignation. Moved and seconded to approve the co-curricular resignation. Questions? Comments? Roll call, please.
Robert DiPiero?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. That passes unanimously. Approval of Support Staff Letter of Assignment.
This is for suit food service. And Ms. Azaro is one of our new crossing guards as well.
I move the board approve a letter of assignment to Ms. Roseanne Azaro as food service worker.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the letter of assignment. Questions on that? Roll call, please.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DiPiero?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Approval of co-curricular letter of assignment.
Ms. Harrington, who has applied for this position, actually is one of our former student athletes, and she's returning to help us with eighth-grade basketball.
Great.
I move the board approve a co-curricular letter of assignment for Ms. Sam Harrington for eighth-grade girls' basketball.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the co-curricular letter of assignment. Questions on that? Comments? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?